Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call, all members are present. Approve of the agenda. We have one addition, seven G. Approved closure of Sinclair Lewis Avenue for art crawl on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve of the minutes of the July seventh, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting. All receive them in your packet. Are there any changes, corrections? Or clarification needed? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July seventh meeting?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon, the second.
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Public open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is closed. We have no public hearings. We'll move on to reports and presentations. Police Department monthly report. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Activity report for June two thousand and twenty-one. Some of the numbers we had, we gave out one hundred and seventy-one verbal warnings. Uh, we did a hundred and thirty-four door checks. We did fifty-two, uh, bar checks. Or, let me see, excuse me. We did hundred and thirty-four door checks. Well, I can't line these up. Hundred and thirty-four foot patrols and looks like fifty-two door checks. Okay, and then we did, we had six accidents, twenty-five medicals, twenty-five personal assists we did. We had fifteen alarm calls, fourteen welfare checks, uh, nineteen suspicious activity calls, nine bar crowd patrol, nine unwanted person calls, five juvenile problem calls, uh, thirty-six assists for other agencies. We had fourteen suspicious vehicle calls, nineteen suspicious person calls. Uh, we had sixty-six citizen contacts. We had twenty-five matter of information calls. We gave out twenty-four speeding tickets. And we had five thefts. So kind of the total numbers, we had a hundred and seventy-one verbal warnings. We had seven hundred and nineteen, uh, calls made for a total of eight ninety for the month. So compare that to, uh, last month. We were up, uh, up a hundred and two calls. We gave less, uh, seventy-six less verbal warnings. And compare that to twenty, two thousand and twenty, we were up a hundred and thirteen calls and gave sixteen less warnings. You tell the COVID is, uh, has passed us now and we're getting a little busier, so.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah. So gearing up for the, uh, fair next weekend, uh, we're gonna have, uh, one officer pretty much working the whole day out there, uh, this, this year, so at least have a contact out there right away. Otherwise, we'll do a lot of walkthroughs like we usually do, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Public Works Department, Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, for June of this year, at the Challenge Park, we spent quite a few hours helping with various tasks that the install crew needed help with. We also did the sprinkler system, uh, black dirt installation and the seating and erosion blanket, so that is all done. Uh, we did edging on the park sidewalks and city curb lines. Those areas were swept with the sweeper once that was completed. The pier by the band shell, the ramp leading up to the shoreline was creating small trip hazards, so we had the ramp bent to lay flat on the concrete leading up to it. So that basically eliminated that hazard. I installed a drinking fountain and bottle filling station at J C Park. The new one had a leak, so it was replaced under warranty. We completed the playground inspections to make sure that everything is safe for the public to use. Didn't find anything of major concern, couple minor things to take care of. Mowing, trimming, weed spraying and general grass maintenance has been ongoing, less this year due to lack of rain, but still things to take care of. Campgrounds, some small repairs to RV pedestal breakers that are going out on us. Uh, the outdoor rink, continue to work on the board installation. This is getting closer to being completing and is looking nice. Splash pad, pump system and chemical system have been balanced and working well so far this summer. Some small problems, but they were fixed quickly and the system has stayed operational every day. Uh, community garden had four water faucets that were leaking due to people closing them too hard and ruining the O-ring inside the valve. They have been changed to a different style that does not require the O-ring, so that should eliminate that issue going forward. City sidewalks that needed to be repaired due to trip hazards were removed and new concrete was poured by the public works staff. The contractor who will be doing the sidewalk grinding will be here towards the end of August to start making the first round of repairs. We lowered two manholes on city streets that were sticking up higher than the roadway, which was an issue when we were plowing. Uh, Hickman Drive had a couple holes open up in the tar leading to the pond. They were cut out and repaired. Uh, we did pick up a full trailer of tar that day and repaired some other areas in town that we saw needed it. Uh, we did street sweeping throughout town and then the week of Sinclair Lewis days, the sweeper went through the parade route downtown in Sinclair Lewis Park. And, um, we spent some extra time throughout the park and the areas where the chamber events were happening to make sure everything was looking, looking nice for everybody to use, so. That was kind of the last month. Any questions I can answer?
Questions, comments?
Did they ever find the medallion? I was just gearing.
From what I understand, they did.
Okay. Where'd they find it?
Teniscords, wasn't it?
Where?
Teniscords at the high school.
Oh my gosh, I never thought, I was looking at a dog park.
I know one thing that, the edging that you did, uh, reveal the curb out in the industrial park really looks good.
Yeah. That turned out nice.
Changed that whole area a lot.
Really?
So if you get a chance to look at it, it's pretty nice, so. Thank you. City injury engineer report, I was gonna say, is it Keith or Chuck, but it looks like Keith.
Yes, thanks, Mayor and Council. It will be me tonight for the, I'll be providing the updates on ongoing projects and Chuck will actually be up next to go through the feasibility report for you, so. Uh, the two thousand and twenty capital improvements project is really not much changed since the last time I was here. Um, we're just waiting to kind of finish up some of the seeding portions with this, with the hot weather or dry weather. It's been a little challenging, but all things considered, frankly, it looks pretty good compared to the rest of the area, if you will. Uh, we would encourage residents to mow some of the areas that haven't been mowed. I think that'll help with the, with the weed control, but we'll be back, you know, really in September to kind of take care of those little bare spots. There's a few of them here and there, um, but it's just not the time to do that kind of thing and seed at this point. So we have to wait till September to do that, so. But generally, it looks pretty good, just a couple little things to clean up on that one. Um, Aerosmith Platte Three project, which is the Interpretor Center site, is going well. The, all the utilities are installed at this point. Um, the excavation and grading is ongoing, uh, probably actually as we speak, they're still working down there, so. Um, hopefully on schedule to get that completed on time, but I'm not quite so sure they'll have all of the earthwork done when they're supposed to. But I, but they are concentrating on the north third, which is what needs to be done, uh, for the short term, so we'll be working on that. Uh, but that's going well. The Industrial Park South project, the plan specs are coming along nicely. Um, we'll probably have that before you either the next meeting or maybe the next meeting. One of the two will come before you for that, uh, project. Um, and that's really about it. Any questions for me?
Questions? Are they, they must not be too worried about getting done on time because I notice I don't think last Friday they worked at all.
Yeah, they didn't work and they weren't actually gonna work this week until Thursday, until tomorrow, and ended up saying, oh, we're gonna come in and start working, I guess, so. You know, I don't know if they think they're gonna get it done. I have some doubts whether they're gonna make that deadline, but, um, as long as they get that north portion done, that's the most critical for us, so. Uh, and that is where they're feeling and, and working at the moment, so hopefully they'll do what we really need to get done and, and we'll be pushing them to, to get that done. But I, I, I can't do it unless I get out my own shovel and do it myself, so hopefully they'll get it done.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Feasibility report, two thousand and twenty-two CIP project, Second Street South.
Good evening, Councilor, Mr. Mayor. I'll be presenting on the feasibility report for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two capital improvements project. Kind of got a lot to go through, uh, so feel free to stop me along the way with questions or comments on any of the options that we're gonna be presenting. So this project is split up into two parts, two segments. The blue, looks like blue on, on here, it looks like blue a little more, but, uh, the blue area up there is the street reclamation area. Uh, that stretch goes from, on Park Road from Main Street to Hickman. Uh, Hickman Drive all the way up to the, where the pavement ends on the north end. And then includes all the side streets of Park Lane, uh, Park View Drive, Hendrick Street, Lakeview Drive, Loop, Sock Lake and, and Kennicott Terrace. Uh, the solid red line you see is a full reconstruction area. And then the dash red line is a partial street on the left-hand side on Spruce. That's, uh, we're gonna be looping the water main, uh, so we'll just be replacing the egg base section up there today. On the right-hand side is, uh, another partial street improvement, which we'll just be replacing, moving and replacing the, the bituminous partial street as we, uh, install the wat, or storm sewer through that stretch, through that block. Uh, both of these areas fit in accordance with the city's overall master plan for infrastructure repair and replacement. Uh, for the street reclamation area, existing conditions, you know, nearly all this area is residential, uh, with the city park areas, Sinclair Lewis Park, the campground and the splash pad. Existing pavement issues we see in this area mostly consist of transverse and reflective cracking. And that reflective cracking just means the pavement has lost its flexibility over its life, so it's no longer, uh, you know, move with the freeze and frost, uh, freeze and thaw, uh, movements. And the cracks here appear to go, uh, fully through the bituminous section, so they're all the way into the aggregate base, so water and moisture can get in there and cause more problems. Existing utilities in this area are from the nineteen seventies. The water main is a ductile iron pipe and it's mostly six inch with ten inch mains supplying the region. And then the sanitary main is a concrete pipe in this area. So kind of the street plan, what we have proposed for this area, uh, reclamation, which includes grinding up the existing bituminous, uh, in between the curbs and mixing it with the existing egg base to create a, a new aggregate base mixture that we're gonna be using. Um, including then spot curb replacement, we have about twenty percent included in this, in this feasibility report for that. Uh, and adjustment of all the structures. Based on the soil reports, the, the average, uh, the two minutes thickness in this area was three point three inches. And then the average egg base depth was five point six inches for this area, so kind of late on that. The new, the new, um, section we propose is eight inches egg base, two inches of non-wear course and one inches of the two minutes wear course. That, which is kind of the standard section we use. Then kind of the timing of the end of the life of a reclamation project to be about twenty years, um, which will coincide with about, uh, the rest of the life utilities have in this area, so roughly about twenty years would be a time to do a full reconstruct in this area, so timing this project works well. Uh, looking at the full reconstruct area project, uh, again, it's mostly residential with some commercial near Main Street, a few other areas. Uh, the pavement issues we see in this area, again, consists of reflective cracking as well as alligator cracking, which means just the, the, the bituminous section and the base section can no longer support the traffic loads it's seen, so it just breaks up into smaller pieces. And then the curb issues we see, just, uh, old curb, uh, square curb and even missing sections of curb on, on a few of the streets. And then the utility issues, they're, you know, near the end of their serviceable life as well, as well, they're from the sixties. The water main is cast iron pipe, very susceptible to breaks, uh, four to six inch in size. And the sanitary main is even older, we're not quite sure how old that is, but that's a clay, clay pipe. Uh, the PUC will be replacing their utilities in this portion of the project. The new sanitary main will be PVC pipe, eight to twelve inches in size with new structures throughout. The new water main will be PVC pipe, uh, six to eight inches in size, so it'll be increasing from four to six to six and eight. That'll just be to help with, uh, uh, conveyance capacity, fire flows and such, um, and then new hydrants and new gate valves throughout. Also, as I stated, the water main is gonna be proposed to be looped on Spruce Street, uh, on the west-hand side where there's no water main today, so. For new water services in this portion of the project, uh, one inch copper pipe, uh, and new curb boxes installed at the right of ways. New sanitary services, four inch PVC pipes installed to the right of ways. We will have some oversized services for the commercial buildings. We haven't determined those sizes yet, but will later on in the design process. There also has been some, uh, water and sewer services installed by residents in this area in the past, ten, fifteen years. Uh, those residents are identified in the report. They're on Walnut Willow, so we do not plan on replacing those or assessing those residents for those, but we will reconnect them to the, to the new mains. For the storm sewer, uh, in this area, um, most of it's undersized, uh, and near the end of its serviceable life. Like on Second, Second Street, most of it's twelve inch size, which is very small. And we preliminarily sized the storm sewer for this report. Uh, those sizes may fluctuate a little bit with final design. Uh, all the new storm sewer pipe will be reinforced concrete pipe, uh, and then new catch basins, new manholes. You know, we'll put those intersections to increase, um, runoff, uh, efficiency and, and, uh, collect the runoff a little better than it is today. We also propose on extending the storm sewer to Spruce Street on Pacific and Second. On Pacific, there's really no outlet in the lowest spot by, um, um, the truck place and, uh, it kind of drains over the trail and into the development back there, so. Propose on extending it that far and as well as Second Street. And then when, if Second or Spruce ever, uh, gets paved and made to an urban section, we'll, we'll need some storm sewer there, so we can kind of set up for the future. And then currently, uh, the storm water enters Sock Lake untreated, so we propose a new storm treatment device. Same device we've used on the two thousand and twenty and two thousand and eighteen projects. Uh, it, it'll treat the first inch of rainfall, which is required by the N T C A and Sock Lake watershed. Um, you can see the location of that, uh, there's an existing structure there today, uh, so it'll be, it's kind of old, so we'll replace it at that location. Two pipes that come from Second to that, uh, new storm treatment device location, those, we do not plan on replacing those. They're adequately sized for the, uh, tributary areas today. Uh, I think there's a twenty-seven, a twenty-four inch there and it goes thirty-six to lake, so. Looking at the storm sewer east of Main Street, uh, this area lacks any storm sewer pipe and an outlet to the river. Currently, the storm water drains in the street to Second and Birch and there's a French drain catch basin there that infiltrates, but it does see regular flooding in this area. So we propose a new storm sewer for these three blocks, uh, all the way from Main Street to, uh, a, a new storm pond in the city lot. We'll work with city staff to, uh, place that pond at a location so it works with their, um, use today with snow stores and such. And then the pond will have a, a drawdown discharge pipe that'll go into the river as well, so. Uh, this model is our hydrocat model, it shows, it's what we use to size the pond. Uh, the pond is sized for a hundred year storm event, which is about six and a half inches of rainfall in a twenty-four hour period. All the pipe will be sized for a ten year storm. Uh, that'll be, uh, that's about a four inch rainfall in a twenty-four hour period. And this also, uh, this area east of Main Street, we, um, included, uh, so, we included storm sewer up to Main Street on Second. Uh, s, with the Main Street project, we'll likely extend that across Main Street to pick up the west curb line. So that'll be a, you can see the ten S node, the green on the bottom left, that's that tributary area there. That'll, so with that Main Street project, we'll be able to pick that up and drain it to a pond. And as well, it'll, uh, we'll pick up the, uh, Saint Paul Church Pond as well. That discharge will connect it with this storm sewer system, so that will drain into the street. Uh, looking at the existing street widths, uh, they vary a lot throughout this reconstruct area. Second Street between Wabegon Trail and Willow, the existing is thirty-six foot wide, um, so we propose a thirty-six foot or standard street width. There is an option though to go, so there's no sidewalk there today connecting Willow Street sidewalk and the Wabegon Trail. So we propose on a, an option to do a thirty-two foot street with sidewalk on the south side against the back of curb. Be like, be a six foot sidewalk. Uh, it's an option, I don't know if the, call the council feels on connecting those sidewalk routes, but, uh, that could, is possible. Uh, continuing on Second Street, so from Willow Street to Oak Ave, uh, the existing street width is about thirty-nine feet. We have a thirty-six foot wide street design with sidewalk on the north side. And then from Second Street from Oak to Main, the street varies from thirty-nine feet to forty-six feet as it gets to Main Street and widens out quite a bit. Uh, we have a thirty-six foot wide consistently throughout that block proposed. And then from, on Second Street from Main Street to Birch on the east side, there it varies forty-two feet at Main to thirty-five feet. We have a thirty-six foot wide street with sidewalk again on the north side. You can see it quite well, but we kind of wanted to show you our first draft of, of the lane layout, as we call it, for the two blocks on both sides of Main Street. So there's some existing, uh, parking habits in this area. Frederick's Tire and Oil, they per, perpendicular park against their building and their shop there. So we, we kept a twenty-two foot wide parking, uh, area outside the curb line for them. And then have a sixteen foot wide driving lane, uh, which provides a four foot buffer in between the parking and, and traffic. And then it'd be the westbound traffic lane on the left-hand side is a normal twelve foot driving lane and then parallel parking on the north side. We have a six foot wide sidewalk there as well. And then on the east side, they utilize perpendicular diagonal parking on the, uh, salon building, the southeast corner. So we provided space for that. And then a sixteen and twelve and eight as well with sidewalk up against the A and H building. Kind of a first draft, I don't know if, you know, might have some feedback from city staff on a little bit change in there, but, uh, this does offset, uh, the street center lines a touch, about seven and a half feet is, and you can see the, the center line, if it comes into, uh, Main Street from the left-hand side, it shifts up about seven and a half feet on the, on the east side with this. And we do plan on, uh, we propose on striping this area, these blocks, we do recommend that, so.
Now, both sides of Main Street, that'll be part of the Main Street project anyway, right? One block on either side of Main Street?
We haven't.
That's what we were kind of planning, is from what I understand.
Sure. I don't think we've quite decided which, uh, which portions, which streets we're gonna include with that Main Street project. Certainly can be an option that if we want to save room for that.
Cause I was thinking basically every street from south end to the north end, one block on both sides is kind of what the Main Street project was gonna be.
Okay.
So for us to go in and do that right now on Second Street would be kind of defeating the purpose that they're gonna be tear it all back up again.
Sure.
Or part of it. Unless I'm getting it wrong, but.
Um, Council, I thank you and. We, we wanted to show this just as kind of an option for you. We, we've, I know we've discussed kind of whether we want to consider these blocks or not. Um, we don't have to do these, so this is something that, you know, you can provide some directions to your thoughts. Um, it, I mean, it could be done and leave, you know, all you're really tearing out in the future when seventy-one's done is essentially the radiuses and that's about it. So that's not, it's not a lot of over, but we still may want to wait potentially and do it at that time. So that's a decision point that, that you all can think about and make. So it's, it's by no means this has to be done as part of it, this, this could be pulled out if we wish. We certainly needed to size, you know, what, what kind of mains and especially the storm sewer. So, cause the storm sewer will start on the east side, would start further on down, so we need to make sure we're, we're large enough as we come up.
Right.
Towards it, so.
What did we leave on Lake Street? How much did we leave on Lake Street?
On Lake Street, we left, uh, the last lot we went up to.
So just the Gas Mart north side lot?
Exactly from their car wash.
Yep, there, that, there the reason was there's existing storm sewer on that side of the intersection, we didn't want to get into that.
Yeah.
Cause we weren't able, didn't, it didn't pay to size that and replace that without knowing what size it had to be, you know, with the Main Street project.
And you know, the, the more I look at that, it probably wouldn't hurt so bad. I'm looking at Frederick's as a business right now, because if we do that whole thing along with Main Street, they're basically gonna get shut off for a while on both sides.
And they utilize.
We do, do part of this and leave, you know, take Second Street and do that now partway, then at least even when Main Street's done, they got a way to get in and we're not shutting them down, otherwise you're looking at two years of construction they gotta put up with.
One other thing I wanted to point out is a potential option, you know, if you're, look at this offset as being a little concerning. We could make these into diagonal parking, which would be able to shift this road this way a little bit further so that we could shrink this. And then this little up, you can see it's kind of moving out here. This could maybe be a little straighter, it still might be a little bit of a bend, but that would be another option for that if you didn't like that large of an offset. It's, it's a wide intersection, so it's, I'm not too concerned, about seven and a half feet, but we would probably be able to make, cut off, you know, two to three feet of it if we were to do angle parking on that south, uh, east side there.
I have a question about the south side of Second Street South on the Frederick's side. I see the parallel parking that currently happens like against the garage door, but I also know that they utilize in front of that, um, tire shed and the, the tankers that they have parallel parking on that south side. This is suggesting that we will not eliminate any south parking on Second Street in front of Frederick's?
Uh, to the, to the left of Frederick's, that, um, kind of the blue tin building on the left-hand side.
Mm-hmm.
Right into, there would be room to parallel park there.
Okay.
That'd be, uh, your standard thirty-six, which allows for parallel parking on both sides.
And currently, that's forty-six?
Yes.
Wow.
And, and it kind of takes over as it comes to Main Street.
Yeah, cause it seems pretty tight in there.
I know, and I think to narrow it down anymore is just gonna be, uh, it's gonna wreak havoc on that area.
And I know from Oak Street to Willow, that is lined up with this one block here, so we'd have to shift that. I'm trying, I'm just, I'm not even looking farther enough ahead that where I'm looking at the ease of doing snow removal in the winter without doing the, okay, where's the curb go now in this part when?
Yeah.
Can't see it the way it is, you know, if you know you can go straight, but all of a sudden we got this two foot jog here and then over there and it's just a street maintenance, then we'll be repairing. jog here and then over there and it's just a street maintenance, then we'll be repairing curbs every year. So, yeah, there's a lot to think about on that one, yeah.
We can talk more, you know, as city staff.
Yeah.
Kinda collaborate on some ideas there. Okay, looking at the rest of the street, their existing widths, Willow is existing thirty-nine feet, Walnut's thirty-eight feet, Elm is thirty-seven, Maple's the narrowest at thirty-four feet wide. And we have a thirty-six foot wide street planned for that, should fit well with sidewalk being replaced where it is today.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Pacific and Cedar are the narrowest streets in the project. Uh, Pacific has curb on both sides. It is a thirty foot wide street right now. And Cedar's, does not have curb and gutter, is at about twenty-seven feet at the narrowest. So we're proposing on a thirty foot wide street with curb and gutter without walk, without sidewalk for both of those streets. We would recommend on, on signing no parking on one side when we get down to thirty feet wide. A thirty-two foot wide street would eliminate the restrictive parking. However, thirty-two foot might be a scosh too much as it impacts, you know, the, the yards of those residents, you know, twenty, going from twenty-seven to thirty-two is very large, uh, large impact, so. Uh, looking at the street sections real quick, uh, standard street section for all the streets are, except for a couple, but are eight inches aggregate base, two inches batuminous base course, an inch and a half batuminous wear course. Uh, Second Street, all of Second Street and Willow Street, we consider those as collector type streets. So we're gonna go with a heavier, recommend a heavier road section there. Uh, ten inches of aggregate base, three inches of batuminous base course, an inch and a half of batuminous wear course. Uh, and those extra costs above the standard street are, are not included in assessable cost in the report.
And that's what, that would be, we went with heavier mainly because we're thinking that could get back to being the trucks, traffic again, cause right now it's no trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it sees more trips, um, like Getty Street, uh, you know, collector type streets, just sees more traffic.
Okay.
You like to use a heavier road section as the life of them seems to help, help that Just recapping on the sidewalk areas here with this slide, uh, so the blue areas are where we're replacing existing sidewalk, so it's where it's at today. The red areas are where we propose on extending new sidewalk. So Willow, the sidewalk dead ends, or halfway up the block on the left-hand side, we'll extend that to Wabagon Trail. And then as well as Second Street, uh, you know, more dead ends, close to Walnut all the way to, uh, Main Street there. Um, and then, uh, extending sidewalk between Pine and Birch on the north side as well on Second. The dashed red line is the option of the two street widths we could go with on Second Street between Willow and the Wabagon Trail. Thirty-six with both sidewalk or thirty-two with sidewalk. Then the gray line to show you existing regional trails and sidewalks, so you can kinda see where, where those connect with. Um, on this project, there are many retaining walls, large and small, that will be impacted with water service, sanitary service, and even the grading, uh, construction, so, uh, as well as even maybe some new retaining walls or new, new sidewalk extensions, you know, where areas we're gonna play, put new sidewalk, we might have to put a new retaining wall to fit with the grading out there. So, uh, those exact impacts, we will look closer at those during the design process of exactly where and how much is impacted. Uh, but the cost estimate in the report does include, uh, this work, so. Now we'll jump right into the costs. Uh, this table shows the, the breakdown between assessment rates or categories, reclamation, street, sidewalk, sanitary service, water service, and storm sewer. Uh, the second column there on the left-hand side is the breakdown of the project costs for each of those assessment rates. And then the third column, the units, is the total footage is and how many of the sanitary water service is and the square footage of all the lots for the storm sewer. So we take the project costs, divide by the units, and, and we get a, we get a rate, assessable rate, and then provide the, the discount for the, which is thirty-five percent for the reclamation, street and sidewalk and, and storm sewer. Uh, the residents are assessed a hundred percent for the water and sewer services, and then the PUC is picking up the tab for the, all the hundred percent of the water main and sanitary. The proposed rates are on the right-hand side, just over twenty-three dollars a foot for the reclamation. The street costs just over sixty dollars a foot. Sidewalk just over twelve dollars a foot. Sanitary service nearly a thousand per service. Water service about seventeen hundred per service. And then the storm sewer is assessed at about nineteen, or nineteen cents per square foot. There are some larger lots in the full reconstruct area. I think, I can't remember the name of it, but it's off between, on Second, between Willow and Wabagon Trail. We only assess, included a hundred and fifty foot depths of that lot in the storm sewer, kinda matches what depth of lots are in the area, so not the full lot is included. It's consistent with, uh, the assess, city's assessment policy on that. Uh, this slide shows you the average size, assessable cost for the average lot for the full reconstruct. It's just at, this under ninety-five hundred dollars. And then for the average lot size on the reclamation, just under three thousand dollars. For the reconstruct project, the twenty eighteen project was nearly the same at nine thousand four hundred seventy dollars. So we see kinda the balance between the, the reduction in the, um, in the assessable rate from fifty percent to thirty-five percent. We've seen the cost of these projects kinda balance that all as an other, almost equal over the course of the last three years. And then the twenty twenty project last year, the, this, this comparable one was, uh, ten thousand five hundred dollars for the average lot size, which in this larger project, we have economy of scale working for us here, so. Um, there are some double frontage lots on, on the reconstruct project and the reclamation project. The ones in the reconstruct project are between Second Street to Park Road. Uh, there's six or seven of those. Uh, we are only assessing for the reconstruct side of the lots. Uh, city's, uh, assessment policy says if the lot can be divided into two, it can get assessed for both frontages, but just with the trail easement through their back of their yard, it's not really, uh, reasonable for them to be able to split their lots, so. And then the three on the reclamation project are, are at, uh, Park Lane and the cul-de-sac. Uh, there's three lots there that also border Hickman Drive, so we're only assessing for their cul-de-sac side for those three. Uh, this breakdown shows you the, between the assessable costs, city costs and PUC costs. So the assessable costs in this project are just above one point six million, about twenty-seven and a half percent of the total project costs. And the city costs are at just over two point six million, about forty-five percent of the project costs. So we're anticipating that the city portion of the project was gonna increase from past projects. You know, they range between thirty and forty when, when the city pick, was picking up fifty percent, and now they're picking up sixty-five percent of the assessable costs, so it makes sense that their percentage is higher with this project. And then the PUC costs came in at just above one point six million for twenty-seven and a half percent of the project costs. And then for total, total full reconstruct, uh, just under four point five million for that portion of project, and the total reclamation project costs is, uh, one point three five four million. And the total, total is five point eight million for, for this portion, right? We'll note too that, uh, on the past two projects, at this point in the feasibility stage, we included a five percent contingency. Uh, with this project, we upped that to seven and a half percent based on volatility we've been seeing with, uh, material prices and just market conditions. So we, we justified to increase that a little bit, uh, at this stage, so. That's all I got.
Questions? No, the price of tires gone really high.
Yes.
About, what, fifty bucks a yard?
Yeah.
So that's a huge part of it.
Right.
But with their reduction of the assessment down to thirty-five percent, it falls in line with the other projects, so.
Yeah, overall, the, um, average assessment of the reconstruct really was, we'd like to see that under ten, uh, we're happy with that. And then the reclamation section, we haven't really done one of those, first one for this, for this, uh, for you guys, but, um, we thought that was very reasonable too, under three thousand. There are, there are also some, uh, larger lots in that reclamation area. Um, those assessments, I think they get up to seven, eight, nine thousand, so we might, I don't know if the city wants to look at, uh, those individually, or, but, uh, there are some large lots, so the size of those vary.
And I don't think, we haven't really discussed how many years out we, we'd go on the payback on the assessment side anyway for the reclamation.
Mm-mm.
So, you know, even if it's nine thousand, then you do the normal ten year like we do with, or total reconstructed, isn't gonna follow into that bad of a deal. My opinion right now, looking at it, but.
I would think on, you know, re, reclamation, rehabilitation type projects, we wouldn't wanna go over ten years for those kinds of things.
Right.
Typically, sometimes we've gone longer on reconstructs to fifteen year, but, um, I don't think on rehab, we, we would want to go longer just because it, it's not meant to last as long.
Right.
So therefore, we're gonna be assessing them again, not terribly far down in the future, so keep that in mind. And kind of along that line, that's why I wanted to make a comment, is really with this project, we're kind of catching up on, we sort of rounded the bend on catching up with full reconstructs. Not that we won't have any more, it's just that we're gonna have fewer of them as a percentage, we'll be shifting now more towards rehabilitation type projects, that'll be the more predominant. So, you know, perhaps it'll be two or three years of rehab and then maybe a reconstruct. That kind of a thing is kinda where we're at, so we've sort of caught up on some of these large ones with this particular project. So that's good news and very attributed to the, to the council, does, doing a great job on catching up, cause we had to catch up, and I think we're, we're, we're getting close to being there.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thanks Chuck.
Thank you.
Okay, the Sock Center Airport Board met on Wednesday, July fourteenth in regular session. I have a couple things, they're still waiting on their final payment from Mindot on that zoning update project that we did. Uh, we did receive one grant payment of thirty-two thousand, we have about thirteen thousand more, uh, waiting to receive. Uh, we, uh, the twenty twenty-one airfield maintenance project is scheduled to begin on September eighteenth of this year. They've awarded the grant and that paperwork will be coming through shortly. Uh, the twenty twenty-one land acquisition environmental assessment work is waiting on the grant paperwork, and that was the environmental assessment that we have to do for land acquisition for future, um, realignment of the turf runway. Uh, the final funding for our twenty twenty-one projects I have laid out there, the FAA is participating at eighty percent, eighty point five percent, the state at thirteen point six percent, and the city at five point nine percent. So the city's share is twenty-one thousand eight twenty-six of a grand total of three hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um, that's our twenty twenty-one projects that'll be done, uh, either yet this year or the beginning of next year. Our fund balance of entitlements that were eligible to, to receive right now is five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and that is the FAA money that's allocated to the city of Sock Center Airport. Our, uh, we did get selected for the twenty twenty-one state grant for the hangar door upgrades, that is an agenda item later on the agenda. Uh, and then also, they discussed there's some, uh, potential changes that might be needed to our card reader because of technology at the airport, and we're just looking at the card reader for the fuel pump is what that's all about. I have one agenda item to talk about, and that's under seven C, and that'll be the, the hangar door grant.
Okay, questions? Okay, we'll move on to action items. Seven A, approved pay request number six, twenty twenty capital improvement project.
This is the twenty, or the pay request number six has been received from Breitbart, and this is on that Elm Street project. As you can see, the total contract amount was nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, of which eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand has been earned to date. Uh, after we give retainage and prior payments, that leaves a pay request of, at this time of sixty thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and eleven cents. We still have the retainage we're holding of eighty-eight, eighty-two oh seven, uh, that won't be released until all the work is completed.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve pay request number six?
Motion to approve.
Question by Heidi.
I'll second.
Second by Joel. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven B, approved bylaws amendment, Sock Center fire relief.
Um, the fire relief is presented for an approval amendment to the bylaws to increase the annual benefit. The annual benefit is an amount that is paid out to retiring firemen, it's a, and a dollar amount times their years of service. Uh, you do have the attached scenario that shows that funding would remain at a hundred and ten point six four percent if an annual benefit of twenty-five fifty were approved. This would be a two hundred and fifty dollar rate increase, and how that works is they have investments that you can see that their total assets that they have invested, and then, uh, less their liabilities, it'll show that the surplus in the fund if every fireman left and everyone was vested at this time. So you'll show that that funding ratio of one ten point six four percent is what they are requesting that we, uh, raise that benefit increase to. And the reason that the city approves this benefit increase, cause if, if at some time the fire relief did not have the funding available, then the city is responsible for making up that shortfall. So, uh, the action requested tonight is to approve an annual pension benefit of twenty-five fifty for two thousand twenty-two.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the annual pension benefit?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sheldon. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries four in favor, none against, one abstention. Seven C, approved resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-two authorizing execution of grant agreement.
Uh, this is the grant agreement I spoke about in the report. The Municipal Airport has been selected for a twenty twenty-one, twenty-two grant for the replacement of door cables on the two thousand T-hanger. That'd be from a, uh, from the, the cables or the, yeah, the cables to a strap driven, driven device. The cables, they fray and they break over time, those are very heavy doors, the way they open, and so we're gonna convert those to strap driven. Uh, that has been on the city CIP at the airport for some time and was selected by Mindot Aeronautics for funding. The project total is a hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and five dollars. State will fund seventy-five percent with the city funding twenty-five percent, so that means the state would pay one hundred and nine thousand and the city would pay thirty-six thousand. Uh, the airport board has received this agreement, they recommend that the city enter into the grant agreement, and with the repayment of the funding from the airport zoning that went back into the fund, uh, the airport has, is, has the city's share already in the bank for that. So what we're looking tonight is to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-two authorizing the execution of this grant agreement.
Questions, comments?
I had a chance to go out there the other day and see the system, it was kinda interesting to see it, so thanks for taking me out there Ben. And even seeing the cables that were fraying, so that was interesting too.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Sheldon.
I'll second.
Second by Joel. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven D, approved resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty-three accepting feasibility report and calling public hearing on twenty twenty-two capital improvement project.
So this is subsequent to the, to the, uh, report, receiving the feasibility report for the twenty twenty-two public improvement project, or the Second Street project, if you wanna call it. Uh, you should consider the scope of the project, recommend amendments, and then call for a public hearing. All affected property owners would be notified of the hearing, will have an opportunity to voice their opinion on the project. Uh, this is not the final assessment project, but this is a, the scope of the project hearing. We could schedule that at a regular council meeting or at a special meeting, can be called for this purpose. Uh, we are suggesting the, the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting to have for that. Another option that we do have is to break it into two, one for the reclamation side and one for the reconstruct side, if you think there's gonna be too many people wanting to be present. If you think there's gonna be too many people wanting to be present for that. Um, we have split meetings before, uh, and it's a mixed bag. Sometimes you get everybody there, I don't know how many will come for the reclamation because they're real excited about it, so. I guess my recommendation would be to have one meeting, um, if we have to do it when we get started and we realize that, we can always uh, recess half of it and have it in two separate meetings. Um, the one thing that, you know, we're not gonna get into a lot of design detail at this point, this is kind of present this to the public. And then once if we order the improvement after that, that's when we really get down into the design and into all the details, when they'll be coming back and asking various questions about the design. If you have something that really jumps out at you that you think we need to address to make sure we have it clear in the feasibility or in the public hearing, be sure to let us know so that, uh, we can cover that in the hearing. Or if there's something you felt was unclear, we want to make sure the presentation to the public is clear. So what we're looking for tonight is it is to simply accept the feasibility report and call for the public hearing on the improvement.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-one dash sixty-three?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Any other discussion?
I will be on the second meeting of August, so.
On the seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven E, approved EMT driver.
So Jamie Olson, uh, started with the ambulance department as a first responder driver on February fourth. Uh, Kathy Stuford is recommending that she be removed from probation as she's exceeded the number of patient contacts required and continues to take act active call and is available for backup. So, uh, there's no pace difference for this, it's just she wants you to approve the probation removal for Jamie Olson as that first responder driver.
Okay, comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve the probation removal.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon.
I'll second.
Height, second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven F, authorized execution of easements for Aerosmith plat three.
So the development plan for the former information center includes three separate businesses that will each have their own parking areas. However, as is common with this type of development, the areas will be connected and will allow traffic to flow between the properties, which will connect to public streets. We did have a cross easement drafted by the city attorney, which will grant each of the owners the ability to cross over the other properties for use of the drives, entrances, and the parking. And we do have the declaration of the cross easement was sent out to the various buyers, and so they were had the opportunity to comment. And everybody, uh, commented back that they were in agreement with that. Uh, basically, what it talks about is we, um, we will we will allow them to cross each other, that they're responsible for their own property for repairs and maintenance. They each indemnify the other, uh, so that if someone is on the one parcel crosses the other parcel and and injure something, that they'll indemnify each other on that. And that it just runs with the land and that there's no public dedication as a part of this cross easement. So that's what the cross easement says. There will be a separate agreement that's coming forward, which has to do with the maintenance and the operation of the storm pond who's responsible for it, and if they don't, what we can do. So we're gonna have that. And then the utility side easement, we do have an easement that's recorded on the plat for the water main, for the city water main part of it, and then also for the stormwater pond. Um, the other, and then there's one another piece of it too, that in this cross easement, this is simply to cross over. But there'll be a separate easement that, uh, the way the utilities, the private utilities run from the service, their service lines. Service lines for the two outside lots kind of cross over the middle lot to get to the public utility, so there'll be a service line easement, so. Lots of different moving parts with this this project. Um, the county now has approved, uh, the final plat my or the final plat layout. Uh, the surveyor has to go through it and they have to look at everything, and so we'll be getting hard shells for that for signature and everything will get recorded, so we're hopefully dashing under the wire to get that first one closed. So what I'm looking for today is simply to approve the execution of this easement document, which is a declaration of cross easement.
Questions? Do I have a motion to authorize the execution of the easement documents?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven G, approved closure of Sinclair Lewis Avenue for art crawl, September eighteenth.
Um, I have received a request from Visit Sock Center or the Art Lab, I'm not sure which actually, to approve the closure of Sinclair Lewis Avenue for the art crawl that is from Main Street to Oak Oak Street on September eighteenth, it's a Saturday from six AM to six PM. And I did have one comment, have requests that we get approval of the kind of paint they paint on there to make the little spots, because it stayed there for about three or four months last time, so. I guess, uh, that's probably not too hard to accommodate. So the request is to approve that closure and then that'll have to go to Stearns County.
Okay, questions? Do I have a motion to approve the closure?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon.
With the
With what she's
The paint, the paint approval, yeah.
Okay. Motion by Sheldon, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. We have no unfinished business, no new business. Brings us to our consent agenda. We have a schedule of claims, unpaid claims of a hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-two cents for a total of the same. And we have June checks, paid claims payroll of four hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-eight cents. We have a gambling application for exempt permit request from Saint Mary's Parish for a raffle on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at the Eagles Healing Nest. And according to the labor agreement with Teamsters Local Three Twenty, the following will advance one step. Jackson Zenzin to step two on June eighth, twenty twenty-one, and Dean Jungles of to step six, June thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. Is there any questions about the consent calendar? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Informational items?
Uh, the only other informational item I have is the charter lineup or spectrum change of their their lineup. Discontinuing pay-per-view Barker channel, I guess I don't even know what that is.
Neither. That brings us to the end of our agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sheldon. Call the question, all those in favor, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.